This meeting of the Board Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. We appreciate everyone's presence, appreciate your interest in the work of this board and the work of the Chancellor and his staff and the system and all the great presidents we have over our institutions. Appreciate the great work they do and appreciate your interest in it and your willingness to be here today. Now, I'll now call on Mr. Broadway, he'll be giving our invocation. Mike Broadway, who is the Senior Program Analyst for the Community College System Office.
Thank you. Please bow to me. Dear Lord, we ask you, bless this meeting, help the people who come here to judge each of the items they have to think about with the wisdom of Solomon. Keep us safe as we go about our travels through here and abroad. Help us always remember to follow your path. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Mr. Harper, will you call Rob? Present. We have before, next item is the approval of the, uh, our agenda today. Each trustee has received this in advance, uh, and had time to look this over. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that's submitted?
There's been a motion to go get them.
Motion by Mr. Davis is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? There being a motion and a second that the agenda be approved is submitted. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The agenda's approved. Item five, approval of minutes of the last regular meeting, which that was the April thirteenth, twenty sixteen meeting of the Board Trustees. Once again, the trustees have received these minutes in advance and an opportunity to look them over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth meeting? Motion by Ms. Brown is there a second? Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? Any discussion on the April thirteenth meeting? There being none, all those in favor of approving the minutes that's submitted, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Mr. Harper, do we have anybody signed up? There being nobody signed up for public comment, in accordance with our bylaws, we'll move to item seven, action items on instructional student services, facilities, physical information, technology, adult education, workforce development.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take this section into the parts if I could, provide the board with a bit of additional information on item four, so I'm gonna hold that for a moment, just a few minutes. But I'd like to recommend approval of seven A, one, two, and three, five, six, seven, and eight.
The trustees have before them these action items under section seven. These items have been discussed thoroughly by the board at a work session in public. So that's all been public information, public knowledge, submitted questions, and those have been responded to. We have before us a recommendation to approve, uh, seven A, one through three, seven A, five, six, seven, and eight. Is there a motion to approve that?
There's a motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Davis to approve those action items. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion from the trustees? Mr. Smith?
Item three, to make everybody aware, the, uh, infrastructure facilities committee has, uh, looked at this. Uh, this is the, um, the safety issue of the brick veneers that has been coming off of the building. And we, uh, there are some additional, um, there are some additional, um, things they're wanting to do to the facility. Before we talk through with the President and the architect, first making the facility safe and using this five hundred thousand to get the exterior of the building in line with what they will be coming back to us and asking for other financial obligations to, for, to prove. But what this will do is get the building back in an operating order so they can continue to use the building, um, until the design of their improvements. So that was, that was good process to work through, which President and the architect have, uh, to work through at the committee, and I, I will present the committee, and I, and the architect on this. So I think we've come up with the best resolution to handle this unsafe situation. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's diligence and attention to those safety issues. Chuck, are there any other items on this that you need to comment on, uh, on behalf of the committee? All right. Any further discussion on the motion?
On the revision of dorm rates, I think last month I made the, um, the comment that that represents a forty plus percent increase in rates. And in the future, I think we, I would like to see us raise rates, um, maybe on an annual basis rather than waiting four years at a time, or five years at a time. Um, and that would probably be more helpful to our customers' concerns.
It would be appropriate. I know that Dr. Karlowitz has some additional information that might be helpful. Uh, if you wouldn't mind sharing with, uh, with the board, which will maybe help clarify some of, some of the changes.
Thank you, Chancellor, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the board for allowing me an opportunity to speak to your concern. And it's certainly a very, very well-placed concern on behalf of the students that you represent in the Alabama Community College System. Uh, first let me express my apologies for not making it more clear that the cost of the increase in the dorm rates would also include services that the students are currently responsible for providing for themselves, such as internet and TV. We do not provide that currently at check-in for the students. So the increase in the dorm rate, uh, for the semester includes a hundred and ten dollars for internet, a hundred dollars for TV, and then the hundred and ninety, uh, difference between the current rate and the, and those two additions, and the proposed rate is the only increase, a hundred and ninety, and that's about a twenty percent increase over that period of time. Uh, just so you know, all of the men's dorms have been rehabbed. Uh, they were in horrible condition, and I would not have considered an increase, uh, in rates until they were rehabbed. And we also have new roofs, thanks to you, on the, both of the women's dorms. And I, I now feel comfortable providing for, uh, an increase in those residency rates to, at a twenty percent rate. Um, and so thank you for allowing us to improve their living environment and, and thus charge a, a reasonable, uh, in- increase in the dorm rates.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Dr. Karlowitz, trustees?
One question about, can you at one point talk about the comparisons to the local economy, and you're still below what it costs to live off-campus, correct?
Yes, very, very much below what it costs to live off-campus. Our, our, uh, dorms are, uh, are not apartment-style dorms. Uh, the, they're bedrooms. You know, for the women, they'll have a bed and a, and a closet and a, and a bathroom. Uh, they're allowed a small refrigerator in their rooms, and then they share common areas like for laundry and a kitchen. So the rates for those kinds of accommodations are necessarily less than what you might find at some of the other, uh, residence halls at other campuses. And we still are below, we're the lowest in the college system right now, the lowest across the system. And we still would be among the lowest once we have the increase.
You have before you a motion and a second to approve, uh, action items on seven A one, which is a recommendation for time extension on construction or renovation project at Lawson State Community College. Seven A two, renovation project at Lawson State Community College. Seven A three, renovation project, a plunk of Wallace GM, its needs State Community College. Seven A five, construction project, uh, completion of paving needed for, uh, a new, newly constructed building at Wallace State Hansville. Um, seven A six, purchase of computers or related equipment at Torsey Wallace Dovin. Uh, seven A seven, revision of dorm rates at Wallace State Community College Hansville. Seven A eight, allocation of sixteen, fifteen, sixteen industry certification initiative funds for the community college system. Any further discussion? There being none, with a motion and a second, discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand.
I pray. Before, I recommend the approval for item seven A four. I asked, uh, I think I asked Lindell to come forward and kind of walk us through. There were a few questions related to, uh, the parking lot project. Uh, I think we addressed most of them, but he's provided some additional information that I think would be important to be, uh, to hear before we actually go.
Uh, we have a PowerPoint. Good morning, trustees and Chairman Heinrich. On behalf of Dr. Linda Young, thank you for hearing us today about our parking and paving project. Dr. Young wants me to express to you that she would be here today except she is directing our commencement ceremonies. It's a very important day at our college. On October eighth, uh, twenty fourteen, the State Board of Education approved for the college, uh, to build a new building. It is a consolidated health building for our institution, and, uh, we're very proud of that. On May thirteenth of twenty fifteen, you approved for us to, uh, to issue a bond issue, a limited obligation bond issue of ten million dollars, and to implement an eight dollar per credit hour fee for repaying that bond issue to be imposed with the, uh, to the students. Um, upon bidding the project, which was originally estimated to be at twenty-one million dollars, it actually came in considerably less than that. And, uh, it was, came in almost at seventeen million dollars. So we were very happy about that. But in putting this together, uh, and a need that we had, uh, had listed, uh, as a need for the college and our, uh, facilities' master plan, uh, came to the forefront, because we really didn't have enough parking space to accommodate the building. And so that is why we're here today, and I want to present Uh, first of all, we are constructing a new parking lot in support of our new health sciences building. And we're also repairing the road in front of the health sciences building, uh, that was damaged in the construction process. And additional faculty parking, it will be constructed on an existing parking lot that is close by. In laying out the building, it became obvious that, uh, the footprint of the building was going to command more space than what had originally been intended. Part of that space took up an existing parking lot that we had planned to use for this building. So that got taken up by the expansion on the building, uh, which, uh, precipitated a, a large portion of this. These are the programs that are in that building, and we have numbers of instructors who will be there. Approximately forty percent of our students are all allied health students, and so large numbers of our student population will be in this one building. So it focuses, uh, the students all in, uh, one particular place on campus. Consolidating all seven of the college's health programs into a single facility creates a significant need for student parking and, uh, reasonable proximity, within reasonable proximity to the building. During the construction process, the flow of equipment damaged the road that, uh, leads to the campus, one of the three, uh, roads that enter the campus, and that road needs to be repaired. The college also lacks adequate parking to accommodate the faculty and sports staff who'd be working in the building. And the size of the facility required more space than was originally, uh, expected. And to provide adequate space conquers force to sacrifice an existing parking lot, as I previously mentioned. These are the outcomes that we, uh, expect to be accomplished with the construction of the building. Uh, additional parking and road improvements will provide needed, uh, parking, uh, for the faculty and staff who will work and attend classes in the health sciences building. It'll provide safe and well-maintained roadway access to the building and Wallace campus, and it will provide safe pedestrian access to the building. Uh, in constructing this, the entryway that will be adjacent to this building, we are going to limit to one way entering the campus. We only have to train our students to look one way when crossing the street now, so that's one of the things we hope to accomplish. This is a copy of our facility's master plan for the current year, and what you see highlighted there is the, uh, the need that we have for a parking lot, and this was, has been on our facility master plan for a number of years. Uh, it was something that we have needed all along, but we've just now, with this, the building, the, the need has been exacerbated, and that's the reason that we're here today. This is a layout that shows where the parking space will be and the road to be constructed. The large spot, uh, pot, sp- portion of this that is, uh, shaded here will be the parking space. That's approximately two hundred and thirty-five parking spaces there. Uh, the road, uh, right beside that is the entry road to the campus, which will be made one way, provide safe pedestrian access across the roadway through the building. And then the small parking lot at the top of the picture, there's one line there, we're gonna add some additional spaces there. Those are approximately fourteen spaces, and that will all be designated for faculty parking. But what is not shown here is that by moving, uh, parking lots slightly over, it allows us to put another line closer to our CAS building, one of our newer buildings there. So this space will be reserved for faculty parking only. This is a takeoff that was provided to us by the, uh, our engineer, North Star Engineer. And the, uh, portion that was in question when we met at a work session, there was an overstatement on materials in the middle section. Uh, it was four hundred and fifty cubic yards listed twice there, uh, sand and one for, uh, vitamus material to cover the top of the parking lot. And that was erroneously reported to us as forty-five hundred, now four hundred and fifty. Uh, the price of that dropped a little over seventy thousand dollars. And so that's, um, that was adjusted down. This is the financial analysis, the cost estimate, and you can see all those costs there. Uh, the parking lot construction is seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, and that's also the repair of Governor Drive. There'll be a retention pond that will be required, sixty-three thousand. Uh, there'll be the smaller parking lot expansion, CAS for forty-one thousand, four seventy-five, with a contingency of eighty-two thousand, five sixty-eight. And then, uh, design and administration of forty-eight thousand, one thirty-seven, for a total price of nine fifty-six, three eighty. We honestly believe that this price is gonna come in below this, uh, but, uh, that we were, feel safe in presenting this to you today. This slide shows that in the bid process, the cost of the, uh, the health science building came in at one point six million dollars less than was budgeted. We're proposing to redirect a portion of these savings to pay for the parking lot, dealterations, and paving. We feel that this is an appropriate use of funds because these needs were precipitated by the building. And this is just a shot of the building that we're just showing off here. Uh, we're real proud of this. Approximately seventy-five percent of brickwork is completed, and the roof is nearing completion right now. For all intents and purposes, the building is practically ready. And we can answer any questions? Questions from trustees on this item? Do we have a motion to approve, uh, item seven A four? Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Once again, we have item seven A four, construction of parking facility and renovation of the existing infrastructure that's presented to us here. There being no discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Items approved. Section A. I recommend approval of eight A, items one and two. We have before us here, uh, item eight A, one, two, lease agreement at Gadsden State Community College, and then a revised mission statement. Uh, I think we reviewed that lease agreement, uh, fairly thoroughly at the, uh, work session, and also the mission statement. Any discussion on these items?
I'd like to say word on, on these items. If you wanna, are you gonna do the motion and second motion?
Uh, yeah, I think we have, like, two or three. Is there a motion to approve? Second by Mr. McAnally.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna say here that mission statements really matter, and this one has some really great and important language in it. And it's kinda right in the wheelhouse of the stuff that, that I deal with as the, um, the liaison between K-12 and high secondary. And I just really love that what is front and center and so important for our K-12 graduates is the word affordable. It says Gadsden State, Gadsden State Community College is an affordable, accessible, and, and so forth. And that, that they would see fit to put affordable front and center, very first describer, I think is just so important and so reflective of what our K-12 graduates need, and I just really appreciate it and wanna draw attention to it. and wanna draw attention to it. In the fourth line, um, um, they offer the word life, the words lifelong learner. And that also is a great marriage between what we're doing on the community college side and the K-12 side. If you look at the definition of graduate for high school students right now, we have never defined a high school graduate in Alabama. And when we did that, we included, uh, a describer of lifelong learner. Because over and over, businesses said to us that our students don't come in wanting to continue to study. And really, that's what it's all about. And so to the extent that we can offer that, and then the community colleges can continue that, that's just such an important thing, and so that made its way into the mission statement, and I love it. And then lastly, social, cultural, and economic life. And as we talk about, um, soft skills, and Dr. Heinrich, this has just been such a passion of yours, and I appreciate it so much, I know that y'all need, or we need, on the community college side, students that are graduating with more of the soft skills. Because, Dr. Heinrich, you have talked over and over about how many jobs are lost, not to the domain expertise deficiencies, but the soft skills, not knowing how, yes, so many. And so, uh, I can tell you that on the K-12 side, there is a strong push to, um, to get y'all, students that are at the jumping off point, to continue to develop that knowledge and skill that they need to be successful. But there were just some really important words in here that really spoke, spoke to what K-12 is doing and what we're, what we're doing on this side, and I just wanted to draw attention to that and really congratulate Gadsden State on this mission statement. I just think it's really fantastic.
There was an article that was just recently in a very credible journal, and, and, uh, I know was very critical, they're predicting by twenty thirty, the average four-year degree will cost three hundred thousand dollars.
Wow. That's just not affordable for our citizens. It's not affordable for anybody, much less our citizens. So, um, and you know, one day, I hope that affordable might be able to be dropped from the mission statement because we've just done that, and that's not something we have to think about as much. But for now, putting that front and center was, thank you.
Any other discussion on seven A one and two? There being none, we have the force on seven A one, lease agreement at Gadsden State Community College, and seven A two, revised mission statement at Gadsden State Community College. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand? Opposed?
Chancellor, report. I just, I have three items, so, I'm sorry. Three items, if I could. First, I'm always excited to introduce new employees to the system office, and we have three that, uh, that are here with us today that have recently joined, uh, joined our team. Noah DuBoltz, information technology operations technician in our information technology division. Thank you, welcome. Linda Jones-James is an accountant in our financial services division. And Pamela Watkins, also an accountant in financial services division. Welcome, each of you, I'm glad to have you here. Uh, the second, uh, the second item, and I think all the, the trustees are well aware of the fact, and, uh, we've spent a lot of time on this, but of course, you all were seated last, uh, last May. We swore it in, we had our, we had our first meeting, and this is, uh, we, you know, this is our, I guess, is our first year anniversary. Uh, and I think you're aware of the fact that, uh, there are certain steps we must take with reference to our creditors, Saks COC. And so we submitted the, uh, the documentation for a substantive change that, uh, so that our creditors will recognize, uh, this, uh, this change. Uh, the visiting team, uh, from Saks is, uh, from Saks COC is here, and was here yesterday, today, and will be here tomorrow, and, uh, and will be interviewing most, most of you and, and others in the audience. And I just wanted you to be aware, if you see, uh, see any of those individuals scurrying around, please introduce yourself and, and welcome them to Alabama. Uh, the, uh, the, the third item I'd like to, uh, to address is, uh, is another one we've discussed at some length. And I think, as you know, uh, we have all been working diligently with the, uh, the three organizations or agency responsible for overseeing educational consolidation, to be certain that we're, uh, we, we are crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is with reference to, uh, the implementation of our consolidation plan in an effort to avoid any disruption. Uh, those three agencies or organizations are the U.S. Department of Education, with whom we have regular communication, Saks COC, uh, also weekly communication, and the Alabama Commission on Higher Education, or AIC. Uh, due to unforeseen legislative and departmental delays, coupled with some key timing issues necessary to ensure that our students' financial aid packages are not compromised, and this is a real serious issue, it's been my decision to push back the implementation of this consolidation plan. Uh, we will, in fact, we have begun working with these regulatory bodies and creditors to establish agreed-upon schedule to accomplish the consolidations in two thousand seventeen. This new timeline will allow us to work with AIC to satisfy their requirements and continue our work with the legislature to pass more legislation essential to the success of our full consolidation plan. Most importantly, this new timeline will allow us to make this process as smooth as possible for those whom we serve, and we ought never forget this, we serve our students, and that's front and center. So I'm confident that all involved entities will make this timeline work, and that we will continue to deliver excellent education in these three areas that make up our mission, uh, the Alabama community college system. Those three areas, of course, are academic transfer, workforce development, and adult education. On a personal note, and I don't think I can express this strongly enough, uh, I, I, I just have great gratitude to our lead presidents and their teams, and my staff here at the system office, for the hundreds and even thousands of hours they've already invested in this process to date. And, uh, we are looking forward to many exciting things in two thousand seventeen when it comes to consolidation. So I just wanted to update everyone on that. And, uh, and with that, that's my report.
Chancellor, thank you so much for your leadership and for your diligence, and we appreciate the leadership of your staff and all the presidents in, in regard to this consolidation. It's a very important thing for our state going forward, and, uh, we wanna support you in this and, you know, if any, where possible. Thank you, thank you for your diligence in that. Anything else from the trustees? We, uh, have item nine, we just have our work session, uh, we reconvene for that at one, one o'clock today. And then our next board meeting will be June eighth, uh, at ten AM here in the boardroom. Uh, is there a motion for adjournment? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned.